APFO review for a long, long time.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying they're not considering it either, on the other hand.
Right, but-
They know very well I-70 will be coming parking lot with this plan, but it's not a concern because they don't consider I-70 part of the APFO.
Right.
So, they know it's going to be a problem, but they're choosing to say, "Well, it's okay, it's not part of our process, it doesn't exist," but it really does. And that's kind of the same school of thought here of, "We're going to do this and it's fine, it's not part of our school of thought, it's not part of our APFO, therefore we get to-"
Right, but there are-
...we're concerned about, because we have mentioned multiple times, especially about Zeltman, keeping it agricultural.
Right.
I don't think we can say it any stronger, and yet they went ahead and said, "Okay, we can rezonate our-"
Right, but there are many, many intersections, you know, in the vicinity of Zeltman that will certainly be examined, evaluated, the traffic test will be done.
Right, but we've also requested it stay agricultural, and completely that was ignored.
Right, and that was a political decision, the APFO is law, so there are, you know, firm guidelines and it's like a cookbook that what has to be done and evaluated.
Which, as you've taught us, the APFO was politically weakened.
Changed, right, I will agree to that, yes.
On the other hand, there is a new administration at the helm, and this just reinforces the opportunity, the importance of the opportunity that both the mountain area planning commission sit down with our Carroll County Planning Commissioners and our Frederick County Planning Commissioners, and we'll have that opportunity in the coming months. So, hopefully we can move forward all in unison, you know, with some better collaboration and communication.
Yes.
Well said.
All right, very good.
And we're not beating you up.
Oh, I know, no, yeah, I'm just helping, helping to convey information to you.
And Timmy, you did fabulous job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
I think we should give Tim a round of applause.
You're very good natured about this.
Ken Fevers, I did talk to the owner, the new owner of the Zeltman property, he has no intention of developing that property. He said probably you'll see a horse barn out there pretty soon, he has no intention of development, that's why he bought it, he doesn't want it developed, so.
Does he want to keep it agri-
As it agriculture, he's not, no intention of building anything on that property except the horse barn.
So, does he want to zone that property?
Pardon? I don't think it makes any difference to him, because he'll keep it agriculture anyway.
Yeah.
That's what he told me.
Awesome, thanks.
Ken, I mean, do you know this gentleman?
Yeah.
Could you extend an invitation to him to come to one of our planning commissions?
No, because he has no intention of doing anything with that property.
I, it'd be, I, we'd love to meet.
Well, you know him.
You.
We'd love to hear that publicly.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make the comment that one of the goals that our planning commission had in the master plan and to kick off during 2015 is to open conversation and dialogue with both Carroll County and Frederick County for the purpose of a more regional planning discussion, because obviously what we do has some effect upon our nearest county neighbors, what they do in terms of development and planning affects us. So, why don't we talk about it? Why don't we dialogue about it for the objective of having better quality planning as a result of looking out? And I think our, part of our discussion tonight points out how timely that is.
I mean, there is a difference between intentions and capabilities, and if you gives, if you give it something, a capability, there's a good chance it's going to happen, regardless of the intentions at that time. That's what we have, that's why I'm concerned about Zeltman, I'm concerned about the development, I recognize that. May not intend it to happen, but the capability is there, and it's probably going to happen. Let's-
Councilman King.
I'm Hot Bob King, town councilman. There's also two other things that are happening, the Frederick County Board of County Commissioners and separate from Jan Gardner, the executive, they're both trying to set up meetings with the municipalities on a monthly basis. So, that's, a lot of this information exchange is going to come through that way, so that's something we're looking forward to, too.
Yep.
The first, the first one with the Board of County Commissioners, I believe is on April the 30th, it's about a, about a two-hour meeting, and like I say, the county executive has talked to me about maybe setting up something that's very, very similar to that, so that she gets informed and they get informed.
That'd be very good.
Yep. I think the communities and the counties are both having a similar idea at the same time. All right, very good. Andrea, we're ready for you.
So, I first and foremost owe you an apology. I had the big stack, the big stack of master plans, and they did not come with me tonight. I was so worried about bringing this, that I did not bring that, so I'll take a drive tomorrow and drop them off, so, sorry.
I'm sorry, Andrea, could you again-
Oh, I'm so sorry, I am Andrea Gerhard, I am the Carroll County liaison. So, once again, I'm sorry, but I'll drop them off tomorrow. So, the thing that I was worried about, worried about remembering, is it's that time of the year again for our annual report, and so I brought some copies for you, and mind you, it's not just about mountain area, it's for the entire county, but one of the things that we're responsible for doing is sending a letter to Maryland Department of Planning saying pretty much that you approve it, or you are endorsing it, however you want to say it. I did bring a sample letter, it's what we've typically been doing every year, so I did bring this, just so that you can have a copy. The reason I was so adamant on bringing it with me tonight is because we're trying to get this into the state in May, so I wanted to give it to you tonight, so then I can speak with you more about it at the April Planning Commission meeting, see if there's any questions or any problems or anything like that, and get your signed letter at that point, and so therefore, coming into May, we will be ready to go. So, it was just kind of a time issue.
Is it also possible that we can get those copies of the Carroll County master plan in the next week?
I'm going to drop it off tomorrow.
Week or so, all right.
And how you guys plan on picking me up?
If we can start to dig into it, maybe have some reaction for you.
Yeah.
Our members.
But, so as far as the master plan, it was adopted, I'm not sure if it was the last time I, I was very, very, I was thinking it would be, but it was officially adopted. So now we are working towards the implementation process and reviewing our code and to get ready for our comprehensive rezoning that goes along with the plan. Water and sewer master plan, we have a big meeting tomorrow at Maryland Department of the Environment to talk with them about our plan and where it's going to be going in the future. Another plan that I am working on that doesn't necessarily involve mountain area specifically, but maybe some of the areas around it, I'm working on the rural village plan, which is going to go kind of as an implementation of our master plan, because we now have new land use designations in our plan that are, go along with our rural villages. So we now have rural village, or village residential and village commercial industrial, which are things we've never had before. So the village plan is going to be given to our planning commission, kind of as a, just a tool for them as they're making decisions for redevelopment in those areas. Any other, any questions?
What's an example of village?
We have, just as an example, Pleasant Valley, Winfield, there's Alicia, Bark Hill, Pleasant Valley, we have over thirty rural villages in Carroll County, and I, I would urge you to look at the plan that we have right now, if you just go on, if you just Google Carroll County Rural Village, you will, you'll see it. It was a plan that had to be done kind of as a reaction to the 1998 Smart Growth Legislation. It was, all rural villages are part of a priority funding area, so they had to have a plan that kind of delineated where they were. We're kind of taking it a step further, and we're looking at what's currently there, the acreage, what, what the, kind of like the fabric of the community, because each one is, is different as to the history and why it developed that way.
Okay. Anything else for Andrea?
Andrea, north of Harrison LaSheer, the property, is that agricultural?
Can, can you be any more specific?
Yeah, the, so the Harrison LaSheer property, which for us, we consider it to be immediately north of Watersville, north of Nottingham subdivision, and on the east side of 27. So Harrison LaSheer is one area that the town's been looking at, right, for the, if the citizens decide they want to go ahead with it, the OPE plus rec, rec facilities potentially for the town, but north of that, north-
North of LaSheer Road?
Yeah, north of-
There's some homes right there.
Jack's Court, Jack's Court.
North of that, just in the general vicinity north, is that all agricultural?
I can look to be more accurate, if I had to guess, I would guess it was very low density residential, but-
It is.
I'm, I'm not 100% in conservation.
If it were low density residential and/or conservation or mix, could the land designation be changed? In other words, one of the things I've heard, and that's the reason why I'm bringing it up here, one of the things I've heard, whether it's true or not, was the Harrison LaSheer property, the idea perhaps on some, some people think, rumors again, I've heard, that perhaps the properties north of Harrison LaSheer, what's been described as residential conservation, might also want to be included with this Harrison LaSheer OPE thing the town's talking about. Have you heard anything about that?
I'll be very honest, I am not at all privy to any conversations that have occurred about Harrison LaSheer at all, but it would, just generally speaking, if anything like that were to occur, in order to change, our master plan would have to be opened, it would go through a very public process.
And the master plan doesn't show any of this?
No.
Okay, that's, that's-
Yeah, no.
Okay.
I don't, I'll have to look.
We'll see it after she drops it off.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will, I will look.
It'll be a very appropriate topic when we're talking directly with the county commissioner.
Does it? Are you saying it does, or it's not?
It's, the Harrison, you have the Harrison property, and then across LaSheer Road, you have the LaSheer property, for better terms, and then north of that is the Colburn property.
Yeah.
Um, that entire stretch, the, oh, I thought robbery is because, I apologize. Just adjustment is that, I have good peripheral vision. Those, the Harrison LaSheer are designated OPE, as well as the Colburn property in the county's adopted plan, the land use designation is to OPE.
Ooh, how big is that?
Um, I want to say like sixty years acres?
Check me.
So, the-
It's not a rumor.
There was a mapping perfluffle whereby the town didn't extend the boundary historically since 2003, and it was discovered, so, so the town's outer growth boundary cuts off what we have thought the Harrison LaSheer property was on a map, but then beyond that, when you, like around Jack's Court, and then across LaSheer Road, there's 128 acres, that's part of Harrison LaSheer, and then beyond that is another like 78 acres that the county has designated, and their adopted plan is OPE as well.
So, okay, so this is not-
I'm looking, see if I can get that.
Right, right, this is not rumored, but-
And we can, why am I touching, that's not a touchscreen. I'm thinking everything's a touchscreen.
I'm glad it's serviced now.
Sorry for my-
Internet Explorer.
Yeah, again, the ideas to bring all the stuff up now.
Andrea, we can pull it up.
Can you project it?
I'm sorry, if, I may be thinking of-
Zoning.
-that, so what I'm looking in my head, that's why I'm like, wait a minute.
It's a large, it's a large county, we're catching you on the fly.
Carroll County master plan, just do Carroll County, Maryland master plan.
That's interesting, the land, land zone, agricultural, commercial, it's designated OPE, and your town's numbers don't match, that's not-
This is the reason why I bring it, plus, plus we're currently doing it-
Well, and it's something that the, the town and the county, it was, our acreage, our master plan acreage accounts for the 128 acre parcel-
Of LeSheer?
-of, of the LaSheer property, but the boundary, even since 2003, never, never included that 128 acre parcel. So, GIS technology and, you know, other technology, I was trying to basically marry the disparity of the land acreage, well, lo and behold, realized why it wasn't matching up. But then, so the, the town's text reference to Harrison LaSheer includes all the acreage, but our boundary, our mapping boundary is short, so-
And one of the reasons, I mean, I've been listening to conversations since 2008 about the boundary and future annexation areas and things like that, and so I went back to the first map that I was ever given about future annexation areas and things of that sort, and it never included the northern portion of the LaSheer property, and all the conversations that I was privy to here had always talked about, nothing above the electrical lines would be-
Yeah, right, the power lines, transportation towers.
Yeah, all the power lines that we would do recreation, or some sort of passive development up top, like above the lines.
Yes.
So, it was one of the things that they never really, like there wasn't water and sewer designated to that area, because it didn't think that it would be, and then that's one of the things that happened.
So, if you could, please, because I'm catching you in a spot, it's fine for next, with the chair's permission, but fine for next time. The reason why I, again, I bring it up because it's clearly not rumored now, the facts are on the table, the other issue is, you know, the town has asked for 80 acres as part of the Harrison LaSheer, for rec, there's a 40 acre parcel north of the power lines, west of what the town would get, and that in a sense would almost serve as a land bridge to continue the OPE marching up north. Anyway, my request, if you could work with town staff and at the next planning commission meeting, if you could show us what that is, the designation, and just coordinate with Heather so we can-
Well, Heather was the one who provided me that map, because we don't have, I mean, our entire designation for that area didn't include anything of recreational, the whole area was commercial, I mean, employment campus.
Understood, again, if you could just work with Heather to give the commission and the community sort of, because if you haven't followed this subject, it's very confusing, and it's even confusing for some of us sitting here, so if you could, please, the next meeting, if you could work with Heather and, and sort of explain everybody kind of what we're talking about here, show, show us visually, so we get a better idea of what's, what's going on, okay?
Because that possibility changes the whole dynamic of what we need it.
Uh, you know what, let's go to the resilient.
I, I-
And the whole property.
It affects over 27.
Not that this is the greatest version, okay.
Oh, I, I know, but it, it doesn't help just me, it's more for the community and the commissioners there.
No, I understand, I'm just trying to get a better understanding of-
Heather, Heather has the details.
Okay. It's taken.
Yeah, it does, it does take forever.
We are rolling now. So, the, and that's something that the county, I'm trying to have a conversation between the county and town, because we want to respect what they've designated as the outer growth boundary, and then, but the town wants to fix that mapping boundary, but the greater issue is that, that entire stretch of land, all the way up, you know, beyond the actual Harrison LaSheer property is OPE, which I will show you.
Right, and again, I just-
And the, to answer your question about the open space, what I think the, the thinking is, at the county, is that open space would be part of the OPE development, so whereby the town likes to think of open space as actually land use designation, and we plot it as a green area that is, that is a definitive open space area on a, a plan map, the county is thinking more so that the land use designation would be OPE, but within that development, there would be a section of parkland.
Second, it's, it's probably to give water.
Yeah, again, it's-
And probably to justify the water distribution.
It, 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 just, if I, if I could just, next, next meeting, if we could just have you guys lay this out visually, so that we can understand it, the public can understand it, and we get more facts on the table, because-
So there's more clarity as we're talking with IDA.
It seems like the more I look at this OPE possibility, the less I like it.
But, let's-
I know, but just as a general knee jerk reaction.
The genesis of my question is to get everything that we know or we've heard on the table, so.
Yeah, the planning, the planning aspect of it, there is a bit of a, I don't like the word disconnect, but I'm going to use it, there is a bit of a disconnect, because there, the plans aren't resolved yet, so when, when we're trying to map things out and we're, we're trying to, because for the town's land use plan, I was working with GIS of like, you know, well, how are we, where are we going to map this open space? That's hard, because I wanted a green area, until I found out that we were missing an entire property, but, but the county, you know, has a little bit different mentality that, you know, that green area may occur within the OPE development, so I think it's, it's just different approaches.
And, councilman, I don't, I'm not sure how this is going to come out, so I'll just try it, but it's one of the things also, um-
You're, you're a mug friend.
No, it's just one of the things also, as far as getting everything out on the table, this was an open process, you know, as far as our master, I just wanted to say that too.
Oh, absolutely.
And so the kind of, the way it was perceived, maybe if someone's not as familiar with the plan, is that there's something, you know, kind of happening behind the scenes or something, but this was an open process and opened a 60-day review, and actually a lot more comments than 60-day review, because it lasted a long time.
You're, you're right, I apologize, you're right, I mean, certainly it has been very open, the discussions are always open, and, and again, I apologize, no, no one's trying to hide anything from anybody, you're absolutely right, and, and thanks for the clarification. So, next time, if we can talk about details-
Yeah, no, I mean, Heather, if you can let me know, like, mapping wise, what I can provide, I will, you know, we'll bring everything that we have, I just, I need just a little bit more clarif-
Yeah, Linda, Linda Eisenberg and I have been working to try to resolve the disparity. My conversation started with Andrea, and so Linda and I are trying to, to work that, but we will provide you some information.
And one of the, one of the things that Linda has expressed to me is that, right now, as, until plans are moving forward with Harrison LaSheer in a, you know, and this is actually what we're doing, you know, and this is, then, maybe we shouldn't go about opening our comp, both of our comp plans until this is set in stone, ready to move. So, that was just, I think, the process for kind of what our office is thinking right now, is why go through this process of amend, you know, doing all this stuff if maybe, you know, the residential, I mean, I'm sorry, the recreational acres would be on this side instead of this side, you know, with it all being up in the air, there's no real reason to go before and open all of our comp plans for something that we don't know the, in the now. And I apologize, I didn't bring the dates with me, but I do know that there have been the joint meetings for planning commissions have been, they're starting to be rolled out, so.
May 6th.
May 6th.
May 6th.
Okay.
A Wednesday.
I knew that a letter had gone out, one of-
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
It's the first Wednesday of the month.
Yeah, it's going to be at our planning commission meeting, they have work sessions and then they have business meetings, so this is actually a work session for them in the evening, so.
There's actually, there's a survey, my dear, instrument online that, that the county has created that's, that's insightful, because it, there's six or seven questions to, to get at topics, and particular nuances to, to start the discussion with, I thought it was well done.
Yeah, I, I think that it's really important, like you were talking about, as far as opening the lines of communication, and they figure that if this is going to be done, it should be done correctly, you know, so it's actually, a lot of people are taking a lot of time to figure out topics and the best way to address everybody and all those kinds of things. I just want to say one more thing while I was thinking about it for the annual report, this is still very much in its draft form, oh my goodness.
Sorry, Andrea.
Sorry, I was just pointing, but this is very much in its draft form, it was a favor that it was provided to me early, because I wanted to give you all enough time, so you will see, like, it doesn't have the beautiful cover yet and all that good stuff, so, but just wanted to let you know, so I just-
Okay, great.
Heather, should I leave this letter with you?
Yeah, that would be fine, Andrea, thank you.
Sure.
So, maybe if we had fiber running to the town hall, this would have been easier.
I don't think so.
Okay.
The map is, they're very large, it's going to take so long.
So, this boundary on the map isn't quite right, because this is, like, this area right here, that goes kind of down, this is what the town has historically labeled as Harrison LaSheer, right here, it actually goes up, I'd say probably about to this point, well, maybe even like this point, I apologize for the, I can't see the parcels beyond the hatching, but there's this property right up here, that's the Colburn property, and that too, and this hatching right here, so this all signifies the OPE, so when we include the town's designation that goes into this area, so this, this entire corridor right here, all the way up through here, between the town and the county, is now with a designated land use of OPE.
Okay, so it sounds like we're talking about an OPE sandwich, that the, the Harrison property on the south end, we thought all along would be OPE.
Yes.
Then the land area, basically LaSheer, north of the power lines-
Would that-
Would be rec.
Yes, now, but, but mind you-
With a, with a piece bitten out of your sandwich.
Well, yes, I-
And then above that, we're now talking Colburn and the rest of LaSheer.
Right, now, for the town's OPE designation, so the land use designation may be OP, uh, OPE, that may be the zoning, but within that zoning context, the town is going to ensure that when that, when that development plan goes forward, we're going to have our 83 acres plus 40 perhaps carved out as OPE.
Where's, where's 27 on this map?
What'd you say, Tony?
Where, where's 27?
Um-
Yeah.
It's-
It didn't show it.
Right.
Seems like it would be there, but-
I have a suggestion, I mean-
Look, this is the only map that loaded, sorry.
This is the only one that came up, Andrea.
I'm sorry, no, they, we do have like the PDF map on our site, the reason this is taking so long is because you're on the GIS version, and it, that means therefore it's pulling all the layers and things like that.
I know, but we were trying, we've been trying to get the other one up, so.
Anyway, the, we'll, we'll talk about it, we'll get whatever information that you want, so we can find maps.
Then, let's go ahead and move on, and-
Thank you.
Several things to clarify, thanks Andrea.
Thanks Andrea.
Okay, then that brings us to new business. The first item will be options for the caboose placement.
Thank God Larry's taken-
Mr. Hushour.
I want a break.
Floor is yours. Larry, how long has this project been?
We started this project in January of 2014, but you could back it up to November of 2013, because that's the first time that the mayor and I went up to a place up in Westminster and found a caboose in the weeds and climbed all over it.
Which way?
So you're not going to hide it, you're, we're going to try out our new technology, you want to do something with that? Don't breathe on heavy weight, I-
I won't go into the men's room, how about that?
There you go.
All right, so we're going to start with the caboose locales. I actually, yeah, January of 2014 is when we, when we first started talking to Mr. Scranton about a caboose that he had out on a farm that was on Pin Shop Road. Since that time, we'd managed to get the caboose all the way into Baltimore, and it's being restored down there at this time. I had intended on coming in here and doing about a five-minute lecture that would end with a final decision, but I, I was reminded over the last week that maybe I need to step back, because not everybody's up where I'm at on this project, so, so I stepped back a little bit, so now, now you get 10 minutes of me explaining the process, it got us to where we're at. In that time, since, well, before the end of 2014, I managed to get to the Kiwanis meeting once, even sang a song there, made it to a MAMSA meeting to discuss things with them, and, and since that time, I've managed to make it to, the first EDC meeting, I missed the last one, but several people were there, two planning and zoning meetings, a council meeting, and of course, all the parks and rec meetings that have gone on since that time, talking about, you know, how this caboose was going to work and where we were going to end up with it. Originally, when we first struck the deal and, and the town came along in, in helping us fund this thing, the idea was to put the caboose out at Prospect Mill- the idea was to put the caboose out at Prospect Mills, which is right next to Bingu's store, in that parking lot area. Uh, when we got a good look at the site plan, uh, the volunteers that were running this thing, myself, Diane, Doc O'Brien, and a couple of other people realized that, uh, that the area the caboose was gonna end up when, in would be tucked way back behind the buildings of Prospect Mills, back by some dumpsters. So, we alerted Mr. Scranton to that and he pulled out his plans and managed to, uh, find a way for us to move it up closer to the road. But between the time that we figured out we were going by dumpsters and the time that we got together with Mr. Scranton, we started looking at alternative places to put the caboose. Uh, there were four of them that came up. Uh, one was at Watkins Park. One was, um, uh, over by the train station. The third one was a municipal lot. And then the last one would be where we originally thought by Prospect Mills. So, uh, as we went through this, we started listing the goods and bads of each location. Uh, I had to help a Lynn Hoffman who cut a caboose out for me so I could paste it all over the place. And then she taught me how I could put some kids in there. Some of you may recognize a kid in there. So, so, uh, but, uh, anyway, those are kids who volunteered on Rails to Trails. When we first brought up Watkins Park, the place that we originally looked at, uh, several negatives came out very quickly. One was, uh, they didn't want us to put it over sewer lines and sewer lines basically run beside the volleyball court, between the volleyball court and Rails to Trails. So, can't go over the sewer lines. It's not near downtown, not near the downtown businesses. Uh, the volunteers, uh, I'll expand on that real quick. Not only is it a matter of, uh, uh, volunteers that would sit there with virtually nobody coming into the caboose, but getting the volunteers would be a problem because, you know, and if we had the chili cook-off going on, everybody wants to be downtown. So, staffing it downtown between Manza, the Historical Society, the Mount Airy Community Fund, uh, V F W potentially, anybody who leases this caboose back from the town and, and becomes the caretaker of it is gonna have to staff it in some way on the weekends at least as a visitor center because that's what it's gonna be, a visitor center. Uh, the chili cook-off scenario I just brought up, uh, Center Street, we're not sure what the timing is. I know E D C is working hard on that, which is great, but, uh, uh, but basically it would become a drive-by attraction. People would drive down twenty-seven, go, oh, look, a caboose. It's like when Tony and I fly over the Grand Canyon and we go, well, we've seen it. Keep going. So, it's, it would simply be a drive-by attraction. Site preparation would be, it is, uh, site preparation would be a problem over there because where it would have to go, we would have to take a real close look at because there is a stream that runs through there and even though it's tucked back in the woods and not fully visible, anywhere on the south side of the access road that runs up by St. Andrews, uh, basically goes into a creek, so I'm not quite sure how we would be able to fit in on that side. Uh, potential loss of the volleyball. Vandalism would be a big problem out there. Uh, we'd rather have it downtown where people are actually keeping an eye on it. And some of the locations are very good when you think about keeping an eye on it. Uh, so, uh, so Watkins Park kinda left our conversation. Now, I know the E D C brought up the potential of putting it out in that area. It's, and Bob, you were at that meeting. Is there anything you wanna say?
Yeah, I'm, I'm prepared to speak to that if you'd like me to.
Uh, would you like to speak now or...
Well, why don't you go and I'll go.
Okay, okay.
Last point, Larry.
Yes.
A D A access.
Yes. A D A access is gonna be an issue on every site location. Uh, there's only one site location where A D A is, is not a big problem. We would still have to look at it, but, uh, but the train station location, there's already a ramp there and the caboose would basically marry up to it, so all you gotta do is bridge over, uh, to it, so... I'll talk about it as we go through each one. Uh, next slide. So, uh, train station, the, uh, this property is owned by the Gallagher brothers. And, uh, so we're kinda go through these quick, but it's, uh, depictions of how the caboose would be sitting in there. You can see it's taken up some parking spots. Go ahead. Uh, if you're driving down Main Street, even, even now, I pulled the caboose out so that you can see it. But, uh, you're not even gonna see the caboose until you get just past the, uh, the hobby shop, at which point you would be able to see that direction. Coming the other direction, you, you wouldn't see it at all unless you purposefully turned your head that way as you drove past. Next one. Uh, this is how it would set up. It would take up, uh, four parking spots over on this side and basically take his, uh, premier parking spots for his facility, so, next. And, uh, it's kinda taken up on Center Street looking down, so, next one. Again, next one. Okay, so the goods with the, uh, train station, uh, it is downtown. It is next to the train station, which is very appropriate for a caboose. A D A access would not be a problem here and it's a being Rails to Trails, so people walking past could stop by there. Uh, the bads of it are owner cooperation and coordination. We've reached out to the Gallaghers numerous times. I believe Mr. Scranton has tried to get ahold of them too. We just simply can't get anything done with them. So, that's one problem. Plus, you're taking away his premier parking spots, which might be why he's not so interested in talking to us. Uh, loss of, uh, direct parking to him and there's no mediation plan to it. Those spots are lost. If, if those are gone, they're gone, okay? And then, uh, lastly, uh, he has not done the greatest job at taking care of the train station, so it looks a little, uh, little rundown right now. That's not to say he's not gonna fix it up in the future, but it's, you're gonna have this nice new beautiful caboose sitting next to a train station that has a lot of chipping paint on it and stuff, so, uh, next slide. So, then we started looking over at Bingu's. Uh, it's actually a Prospect Mills property up to and including the billboard back behind it. So, uh, we started looking at that site. Next slide. Uh, next, okay, just a few different perspectives of it. Uh, Prospect Mill next to Ben's. The goods, it is downtown. It's near the station across the street. Uh, owner cooperation, Rob has been, uh, very willing to talk to us and try to figure out a way to get the caboose to fit there and, and he wants it there. And it's nice to have an owner who actually cares enough to come to us and help us get it done. It is next to Rails to Trails. Uh, the billboard is actually on I-beams. The I-beams stick up about fourteen foot up in the air, which gives us a potential to connect to them and weld some sort of an awning that would go over the top of the caboose and protect it. So, it's nice to have those I-beams there. Uh, and it enhance, enhances the town's, uh, the townscape, as they call it. As you're driving from the, uh, north heading south, you're gonna see it right there. As you're coming from the south up to the north, you don't have to get around the building. You're gonna see the edge of that caboose as you get near it. So, it's gonna be very visible at that location. Uh, the bads, A D A access, we have to build a ramp up to it and I'll talk about that when we get through the, uh, final process of it. Uh, loss of parking, but having said that, there is a mediation plan for that that incorporates, uh, uh, the farmer's and mechanic parking lot. And that's something Rob's gonna have to address. And then, uh, last of all, I know the E D C mentioned something about fire potential and, uh, all I would say to that is, I, I don't want the caboose to burn, but if it does, it's gonna be insured and we found four other cabooses out there. Well, um, Bob can speak to that at the end. I know it came up.
One of the guys on E D C is a fireman and, and with the, with the, um, proclivity to having fires downtown...
Don't change those.
Yeah, we don't want it.
Is it because it's next to Goo's shop?
What? Uh, yeah, there's so much stuff in there.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so, uh, that's, that's what's up there. Next, uh, that's it. Okay, so we looked at the municipal lot and there's actually a nice green space up there that could fit the caboose. There's some electrical that's already running up there. Problem is, it's on the slope of Park Avenue, which means you have to make sure the caboose isn't gonna slide down the municipal, uh, parking lot. Next one. And next, uh, yeah, those vans always park there, so it's hard to get a good picture. Uh, next slide. Okay, so, um, and final. Okay, so the goods with the municipal lot is near the museum. That's nice to have. Unfortunately, the museum is falling down in the Flatiron Billy, but it is near it. It's near the trooper, so when you talk about vandalism, I would say this is the most, uh, likely site that it would not be vandalized. Uh, we do own the property, so that's not a problem. And, uh, there is electrical that's already running near it, but there is electricity. Uh, just, just gotta get it to the caboose at the other sides. Uh, the bad, uh, the site preparation, Barney estimated around the eight thousand dollar range just to stabilize that hill and, uh, and get it ready for the caboose. A D A access, uh, once again, an issue. It is not on Rails to Trails and it's only near the businesses, so you run the risk of people driving right by it and heading downtown. Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, I could see one day a year that this is a great spot and that's during the parade because people would go right past it, so, but, uh, anyway, next slide. So, based on all that, we created this hierarchy of, uh, of sites that we would prefer. And, uh, based on the original concept, uh, train station would be our number one choice. Uh, number two would be next to Ben's Prospect Mill. Number three would be the municipal parking lot. And number four would be Watkins Park. But having said that, we had to look at those first two and figure out which one was better. So, nothing's perfect and nothing's terrible, but we have to make the best decision based on, on what we have going. And certainly...
But Larry, number one really isn't viable, right?
That is true because we can't get in touch with the Gallaghers. We can't, uh...
Doesn't number one really just...
Number one pretty much goes away, so we're, we're ending up on number two, but I don't wanna give it away yet 'cause, 'cause there's more. So, uh, so that's where, where we're at in that and that, that's probably a, a good time for you to talk, Bob.
Okay, we, we sorta had the same discussion with, with a lot of the same pictures. Um, Larry wasn't able to be there, but Melissa was. And they, they sorta got this typed up real close for me today. Any location on Main Street, that one there, with, with this, with this location right here, you're gonna lose that whole parking lot because of your A D A ramp that you're gonna have to have. There's no way you'd be able to back car, park cars in there. So, you're gonna lose that whole parking lot. That's what, sixteen spaces?
You're not gonna lose that whole parking lot.
You're, you're not gonna be, you will lose one, one whole side of it?
Yes.
And you won't be able to park any other side? How, how's, where's your ramp gonna go, your A D A ramp?
For the record, what it's showing now is open space on the approved Prospect Mill plan in this particular location. So, there's only parking on, near to you?
That's correct.
That's only approved plan.
Okay. When you put this here and you have A D A ramp coming out further, you will not be able to access these parking lots.
There's other ways to do a switchback A D A ramp behind it and it'll fit, but keep going.
Okay.
You're not gonna lose, I just wanna make a point, you're not gonna lose the whole parking lot. We're very sensitive about parking in this town and I just wanna make sure that's clear.
Well, and, and the businesses, we just lost a bunch of parking out here with the, with the realignment of the street. Okay, so no matter where we put this, we're gonna lose parking. That's a big concern for economic development. Um, and, and we had the same discussion. We came up with the priority recommendation, recommendations were Watkins Park was number one because of access, parking and amenities. You have bathrooms down there. The only bathrooms you have are in this building. So, if you have, if you have it open and people are visiting it, you gotta have this, this building open for bathrooms. The rail yard, um, the, the only good thing about the rail yard is you already have, uh, an A D A ramp. If, if this, if this was gonna move to Bingu's, if you brought it out, what's the possibility of bringing it out between Prospect Mill before you go down the hill?
That was possible.
Is that, is that, is that a possibility?
Larry's scenario.
Because that way you see it coming both ways, okay? It's not up against the, it's not up against the building and, and Jimmy was very concerned that that was a fire hazard and what does the fire department do? Because the building's on fire, they can't get to it and they certainly can't hook up to the caboose and pull it out a little bit. Um, so our, our first selection was Watkins Park. Um, Center Street is going to be the access into downtown Mount Airy, Mount Airy at some point. So, that, that was why, you know, we, we figured you could, sewer lines or whatever, you, you could find a place to put it out there. And so, it would be your visitor center on your way into town. The rail yard would be our second, um, because you've got that, the handicap ramp that would be used, but you're losing four or five parking spaces. The Bingu parking lot, or it's the, the Rob Scranton parking lot, if you pull it out to the other side where you're not affecting the sixteen or eighteen spaces that are in there now, you know, somewhere on the grassy alley between the two.
Bob, Bob, where on Center Street was E D C thinking?
Um, all the way out to twenty-seven, almost out to twenty-seven. And, and that way use as a visitor center, um...
It's like the en, you're saying the entrance of Watkins Park down there?
Right.
Yes.
One, one negative about that that I see is with the idea that Rails to Trails will have a bridge or a tunnel.
Right.
You need to make sure you were completely, way far away from any potential site work that would go to that effort.
Oh, yeah, well, and, yes.
So, then, when you move it back, I mean, my first choice, I believe, originally after Prospect Mill was Watkins Park, but there's some momentum with the Rails to Trails and...
Right.
If you get too close to that, it could impact, again, wanting to make this permanent.
Right.
It could impact the possibilities of bridge or tunnel.
Right.
For the trail.
And, and that was discussed...
Or then it's too far back and it really didn't have the visibility.
And I think we all have, number four is the same one, the municipal lot. Um, but, you know, it's been a long time talking about this and, and, you know, parking lot, parking spaces are a concern. And like I say, we just lost three or four across the street, three or four on this side. You'll lose, if, if everything is perfect, you'll still lose half of the lot down here. You'll lose four or five spaces there.
But, okay, could, could I ask, um, if, if Mr. Scranton owns, um...
Prospect.
Prospect Mill, but Mr. Scranton owns this also significant portion of, or a, a decent portion of Main Street businesses.
Right.
Right, I mean, the survival of those Main Street businesses goes directly into, to, to his concern. Yeah, we're gonna lose a couple more spots. I know that's not good, but i- i- if a, a, a business owner who's invested heavily into downtown, who has got a lot at stake...
Right.
Thinks this is a good idea, is okay with it. Did E D C consider that?
Um, yeah. I mean, we were asked, okay, we, we were asked to provide our thoughts and that's what we've got here.
Okay.
Um, you know, we spent over an hour and, and Bill was there during most of the discussion, I think. And, and this was not, it wasn't just battered around. This is something that was extensively, extensively, um, deliberated by E D C and, and that's what we come up with. Our first choice is Watkins Park. Our second choice is the rail yard. Third choice is Bingu's property. Moved out to the other end of the parking lot, well, we call it the, the Rob Scranton parking lot.
We're not calling that...
Huh? Okay, Bingu's parking lot.
C B I developer.
Okay. And, um, the, our fourth is the municipal lot. We, we don't even think it should go there at all.
Right, 'cause i- i- if, a couple things strike, strike me. Number one, if a business owner who has significant equity and significant amount of capital at risk in downtown thinks this is a good idea, is not that concerned about the parking, that tells me something. I mean, someone's opinion who's got a lot of, look, it's got a lot of money in this...
Once again, I'm gonna go back. We were asked to provide our opinion on where this goes.
Oh, okay.
And that's, and that's what we did.
Bob, I think, I think I can, uh, speak again and, and address the concerns. And Bob's absolutely right. We did go to E D C to get an opinion and I greatly, greatly appreciate it. Um, and their concerns are valid, uh, but I think they can be answered with the exception, uh, well, I can't prevent a fire. And, uh, and as far as the bathrooms go, I mean, it's, it's gonna be on Rails to Trails, so, you know, uh... You've got woods. You can jog down to Watkins, uh, but I, it is a valid concern, uh, with the, uh, with the bathrooms. But, you know, the, the events that go on in town, I mean, there is a, a school of thought that, that a potential shopper goes into Bingu's store or goes into L A's store and says, where's the bathroom? So, and that could be a, a good thing, but, uh...
But one, one thing, the event...
But one thing, the events that we do in downtown now, you've got two. Okay, you've got the Christmas parade.
Yes.
And the chili cook-off. Everything else is done as part of the...
That is, that is true. Yeah. There is a potential to do more in town now that we would have a caboose.
What thing I guess, if I could interject, the idea of putting a Watkins Park kind of, visitors come to Mount Airy, they're going to come to Main Street. That is our center.
That's the goal.
And to be sitting on rails to trails is fine, except most people that I would think use the rails to trails are the town residents who would use it to part of their recreation. How much would they actually want to go into caboose itself versus someone from out of town?
Yeah.
And if that's the thought, school of thought, then maybe it needs to be where the people are, the visitors from out of town would be. That's why I personally think this spot here you have up is a better choice than Watkins Park.
Yeah.
As to drive by...
And having said that, again, I understand EDC's concerns, and I'm going to address them at the end of here concerning the ADA ramp and the parking issues. Because there is a short and a long term solution toward that. Anyway, so we can close that one out, and I'll just tell you a real quick, a little story, because this is where I would have started if I wouldn't have gone through all that. The story of the caboose. The caboose is, we started calling it the Mount Airy Caboose, and that led to us just putting an acronym to it, and it became MAC. But we wanted MAC to be a girl because we want to write a children's story about it. So, we came up with McKenzie as the name of the caboose. So, anyway, potential of a children's story. And what we're going to show you is going to end in the location in the site plan that we're looking at. So, three and a half minutes. This is your...
...around the country, but she lived near Baltimore. She really loved to dance, but she settled too bad. Those men would try to leave her, and she didn't care for that. And she grew up tough on the rugged rail in the golden age of steam. She's the queen of Mount Airy, the star of every scene. She's the queen of Mount Airy, she's everybody's dream. She was tough like a tomboy in the Second World War, bringing troop supplies to the port of Baltimore. When the war was over, she was hunkled to the core. The engines got the glory, poor McKenzie got it more. And she grew up tough on the rugged rail in the golden age of steam. She's the queen of Mount Airy, the star of every scene. She's the queen of Mount Airy, she's everybody's dream. While McKenzie's red hair faded in the rust of old days, engineers no longer would let her out to play. They stuck her in a field on a rail that made her stay. No longer could she dance, she couldn't even sway. And she grew up tough on the rugged rail in the golden age of steam. She's the queen of Mount Airy, the star of every scene. She's the queen of Mount Airy, she's everybody's dream. From out in the distance, McKenzie heard a noise. A ringing crew was coming with lots of big boy toys. They picked her up and placed her on the main street of the town. And now McKenzie dances when the people come around. And she grew up tough on the rugged rail in the golden age of steam. She's the queen of Mount Airy, the star of every scene. She's the queen of Mount Airy, she's everybody's dream.
There you go.
I recognize that voice.
All right. Yeah, our singer is right here, so. All right, if we can get to the PowerPoint presentation on that and go to the last slide that shows the site plan and the ADA concerns and everything. It's the other, yeah, the one that's, caboose... That one, yep. And just last slide. There you go. All right, yeah, that one's probably the best. So, to address the, where'd it go?
We need some fiber.
Finally, we have fiber.
Quicker speeds. Well, this is a good time to reflect.
What I would tell you is that our plan is to take the parking lot as it sits right now. The parking spaces run out, I sat out there with one of the rolling tape measures and measured everything out. There's 13 feet between the mill wall, the old mill wall and the existing... Here's the old mill wall. There's, right now, this is the way the current parking lot sits. And there's 13 feet between the edge of the asphalt and the old mill wall. That could be access to extend the parking lot that direction and get those people parking an extra, well, potentially 13 feet, but more realistically about four or five feet, because there's also a utility pole that is out in that parking lot. Barney would have to tell me how a utility pole would impact the ability to go beyond that. So, you've got nine spots over on that side and a handicap spot. All those would stay. We would just extend them further out and get them further away from the caboose. The caboose is 10 foot wide, 35 feet long. So, with the existing parking lot, right now, those parking lots, these parking spaces are running from the edge of Ben's wall out 19 and a half feet. So, we're talking about taking another half foot, which would give us 10 foot of separation between the building and the caboose. Now, within that, there's two foot that's encompassing these I-beams here. And those are the I-beams that are holding up the billboard. So, now you're down to eight feet. And if you run an ADA ramp, the 35 feet to get from the sidewalk all the way up to the back edge of the caboose, then that would be your ADA ramp. It would actually be between Ben's building and the caboose. Okay? And it would be a straight one that runs up 35 feet, which should be within the grade. I think it's 5% is the ADA grade if you have an arm, a rail on it. So, we'd be well within that. To get, anybody who's ADA could actually come up through the back door and be able to get in the caboose and check it all out. The front door closer to the sidewalk would also be in access where you actually have to climb up into a caboose like old days. So, it would sit kind of out toward the edge there, and we would extend the parking lot that way. And then the other thing that we would do is we put the two handicap spots on that side. You'd still have nine spots over there. You'd keep two spots over on this side, because you're only taking up four spots for the caboose. You've still got two spots over here. And then we would add asphalt back in this area to go back against the back edge of your property with your permission so that the person sitting here can actually back out and drive back out straight.
That is actually an improvement.
Yeah, as opposed to the way it works now. So, that would address the parking problem, and you would still lose the four spots. And it would also address the ADA concern, and it would provide some separation between Ben's building. Granted, it's only 10 foot. If Ben's building's burning hard, then the caboose is going to go too. So, but we are going to have insurance on the caboose, so maybe we can get out there and buy a new one. So, I don't think the rails would burn. This would end up being an area that would be sectioned out by, back in this area along the back of Rob's property as well as the Marvin Weiner's cold storage property, there's a bunch of old rails that are out there. We'd like to pull those rails out and create the border using the rails. Those are mainline rails. They're about six inches high, okay? So, anybody who's backing out, as long as we provide about three foot along this direction, anybody backing out would end up hitting that before they hit the caboose. Yeah, go ahead.
I just had a suggestion. I remember being in Steam Town, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
Yeah.
And they took the rails and they cut them and made them bollards.
Oh, yeah.
And then they put chain between them.
Yeah, that wouldn't work either.
It's up there at the museum. I always remembered that, and it just popped in my mind.
But I'm just as concerned about somebody backing in the caboose. Yeah, they're not going to back in.
So, your pedestrian area would be behind the bollard.
Yeah, and potentially, if Barney says it's okay, and we're able to go beyond this utility pole here, then I would carry that parking lot another two feet, and we'd end up gaining, you know, six foot on the other end of that side of the parking lot. So, anyway, so that's, our plan is to redo this parking lot and make it into, basically it becomes the Visiting Center Park. And Visitor Center Park and a parking lot down there. So, yes, you're going to lose some spots. So, short term, the answer is to open up the Prospect Mills parking lot. I believe the mayor's talking to you. Yeah, so reopening the Prospect Mills parking lot down low, which would provide, I don't know how many spots you got down there. It's... Yeah. So, you get an extra 50 spots pretty quick as these four spots are taken away. And then long term, Rob's plan actually has this area designated as a green space. So, you lose those spots anyway in the long term. Okay? So, anyway, that's what I have for putting the caboose there. And what I need from the Planning Commission, especially as a recommendation next week to the council and the mayor, is support for this plan.
I think this is a great idea.
Yeah.
All right, and I'd like to let Rob speak for a minute. Do you want to say anything?
While we were sitting here and the whole ADA issue came up, I had another thought. And we can work together and explore that. But with the old mill wall, there may be an opportunity not to have a ramp at all because the drop here between here and here is about, pretty close to the height of difference of the caboose and the grade. So, if we, it just occurred to me tonight, because you showed me those other two drawings, but we didn't really discuss the grade. In that case, if the caboose were to sit somewhere in this area, the wall could come this side of it, and it would be a grade from the parking lot side. It's just something I was thinking about. But the other intention is, I believe, we're going to redline our site plan to accommodate this. So, we can explore that at that time before we finalize that.
Well, and that gets it out so that your view of one side of that trend is not Bingu's final side.
Right.
And then we could, if that's the case, if there was any parking loss here, we would then retain this and not have it as open space. But I didn't think of that until you mentioned the old wall.
Yeah.
And the old wall is actually not in the location of the new wall.
Okay.
So, but again, we have flexibility to work on that.
Okay, and Tom McCarron's drafted up the easement for Prospect Mills, and it's gone back and forth between Rob several times. But that easement is drafted with the caboose heading toward that site. So, but, since we're on microphone and video and everything, the intention is permanent location of that caboose. Once it goes in, it stays. Okay.
Larry, can we give you a double, can we give you a double or triple thumbs up recommendation?
If you're good with it, I'm very happy.
Yeah, our mission has always been, so I appreciate, it's been a long process. He's the Energizer Bunny here, and he's the driving force behind this. But, you know, it always was my hope that when I bought that farm and saw that caboose sitting in the middle of the field, that it would end up down on Main Street. So, we're excited about it being here.
And it wouldn't be here if Larry hadn't singled it out.
Well, thanks. Thanks, and I'd be happy to come back to EDC next month and discuss things. Yes?
So, I don't know if I should come up there or not, but one of the, I've been talking with Melissa for a long time because I do the grants.
Okay.
We'd always talked about this possibly being a grant opportunity.
Oh, yes, please come up on camera. We want to get this on.
You're not going to be that excited for what you're going to say. I just had an idea, so. Okay.
Here, I got it. Got it?
So, one of the things... Hello? Wow. One of the things that I've always been thinking about for this project was last year, it became really popular to do Civil War selfies, which people took selfies all along when they visited battlefields and everything like that. And along these battlefields and all these places, they would have like a cutout, like a frame, and all of a sudden, it trended everywhere. People were real, like, social media exploded with Civil War places. And so, I thought, how cool would it be to like, wherever the, you know, you know, whatever the sign is, to have a photo op spot so that you guys could really be on social media and getting people to Mount Airy? And, you know, how cool would it be to be with like the caboose and everything like that? I just thought it was a cool idea, especially, I mean, if you can do it for Civil War, I can do it for, yeah, caboose, so.
That'd be great. The video that we took is actually on YouTube, Mount Airy Caboose. But we also have it on a fundraising site because we were given a tip by a gentleman who's sitting in this room, but he tries to just stick with the news and the facts. But anyway, so that's actually attached to a CrowdLink site, CrowdRise site. And we're hoping that people go and watch that video on CrowdRise and make some donations. So, it'll be after next week, after the council and mayor officially approve this location, then we're going to put out the word that that video is available. And as well, we have a local artist in Charles Beck who's going to paint the depiction of that so that we can put it on a Christmas card or something. Well, we do, and we're going to fine tune that music video from a slideshow to an actual video. All right.
I think it's safe to say that the Planning Commission wholeheartedly recommends your plan.
Do we need to do that in a formal way?
Do we need to do any kind of official...
Yeah, we do. Yeah, I think we need to formalize it, so it's on the record, the recommendation is such. And then that tees up the discussion at the council meeting.
We'll move forward on the site plan.
Yeah. The mayor and the council will be the final decision makers, but I think it's appropriate for us to make a recommendation based upon the extensive due diligence that you all have done. The chair would entertain a motion.
Well, I'd like to make a recommendation, a motion that we recommend the placement of the Mount Airy Caboose and the, at the Rob Scranton's property, Prospect Mill, as described by Larry Hushour. Without any reservation.
Slide 39, okay, we'll get into that.
I'll second the motion for the recommendation.
Okay, motion made by Tony and seconded by Leslie that Planning Commission recommends the downtown location at Prospect Mill for the caboose investor center. All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, light sign. And it's unanimous. All right, so then that sets up the discussion at the council meeting and whatever decision the council chooses to make. But again, Larry, we want to thank you and Rob and all the others that have worked so diligently in taking a look at these options. It's going to be a great asset to the town wherever it's located, but there's a lot to, in favor of the downtown location. Okay.
I think Larry needs a round of applause for all of that stuff.
And I know it took a lot of extra work in preparation, but, um, publicly you laid out, you know, all that you've looked at and all the consideration that went into it. And I think that was very beneficial, not only for all of us here, but, you know, to be captured on, on tape, so.
Yeah, not to put you up on an even higher pedestal, but I know personally, I know personally the work you've done with the routes, the trails and the caboose together, you've done a hundred and ten percent, a hundred and four percent of what's required of any citizen in this town. It's really, uh, it doesn't go unnoticed.
Okay, and we'll move on into unfinished business. And we've got some work plan updates.
Did we skip something?
Hmm?
Their new business?
Oh, oh, the fiber network update.
Mr. Chair, because I work for a telecommunications carrier, I've got a conflict of interest, so I'll recuse myself for this discussion.
Okay. Carroll County Fiber Network discussion. And I'm not sure if it was Heather or if it was Bob who shared with us, this is a write-up by Melissa, is it not?
It was a joint, it was a team effort. Councilman King was, um, at the EDC meeting and you were there as well, I think, Chairman.
There for the tail end of it, yeah.
Um, and the EDC invited Mark Ripper, who's the, um, CIO, um, for Carroll County Government Technology Services. And, um, the, I'm gonna defer to Councilman King as to the, the specifics of the Economic Development Commission's discussion, but essentially Carroll County extended, um, fiber through, you know, throughout the county into Mount Airy. And we're, um, we're pretty new at this, um, and so we're, we're exploring how to benefit from it. It's, it's a project that's very new to me. I don't honestly or personally understand how the technology works. So I don't know if you wanna elaborate on that, Councilman King?
I'll try.
And it, and Councilman Everett, um, can elaborate a little bit, um, technology-wise, but not pertaining to this actual service.
Okay, well Carroll County Government started in two thousand and three, so they've been in this for a while. And they decided they're gonna bring this high-speed fiber optic cable into Carroll County. And they, they discussed their initial plan was to build a hundred and twelve miles of fiber to contact all of, or to connect all the facilities together.
As in libraries and?
Libraries, police, um, fire departments, schools, governments. So it's, and it, the, you know, you hear about the, the four G and three G and five G, that they don't have five G speed, but, um, wireless is about tapped out at its top speed. This hasn't, this hasn't even begun to tap out at its top speed. Fiber optic network, it's a glass cable, okay? It costs about eighty thousand dollars a mile. If you put it up on poles, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a mile if you bury it. He did, he did explain to us with, with real... You don't really help yourself out by burying it in a lot of places simply because you think that it's safe underground and it's not. Okay, just like we were talking about the sewer lines and, and the caboose on top. It's not really, it's not really any more safe underground than it is above ground. The stuff is expensive. They, they, originally they were gonna spend a couple million dollars, they're, uh, six point five is what they originally figured. They're now up to eighteen million dollars with six and a half million federally funded. Westminster has stepped up and they're running two or three areas in Westminster where they're actually gonna bring this into the houses. And what were the, do you remember what the?
Well, but...
There was, there was two areas that they, that they really wanted to, to get it into and one was...
One is Carroll Lutheran Village.
Right, right.
As a pilot site.
And the other one was a section of downtown.
Yep.
Basically what's happening is, is Carroll County and the city of Westminster laying the fiber, okay? They have all kinds of vendors to supply your service. Comcast is not the only vendor, although Comcast is, is who is supplying them with service now, I thought they said.
But I'll, I'll, I'll make a couple of comments. Cause I attended a consortium that was very, very helpful in terms of laying out the concept of this. If, if you put side by side a couple of different straws, and one of them was as big a straw as you could possibly find, and the other was a little, little tiny thing. It wouldn't matter if you were trying to run and breathe through the straws or you were trying to see how much lemonade you could get out of the big jug. You'd be able to get a whole lot more with the bigger straw. And the idea of this fiber backbone, this fiber network cable, is that its capability allows so much more data, so much more information to come through the pipe. It's what Google is essentially spending a billion dollars on in Kansas City. Our version of it in Carroll County is scaled down, but it has the same kind of amazing difference in the capability.
They haven't even reached the, the top speed, the potential speed on this. Every, you have something at one end that drives it, that, that puts the light signal out there and it's just light going through a glass tube. Two hundred and sixty glass tubes in a one-inch diameter, a, a one-inch diameter sheathing that, that protects it a little bit. It's, it's what you put at each end to drive the, to drive the signal and to, to intercept the signal.
So Carroll County, they, they ran the fiber?
Right.
And they, they lit it
Right.
at each end or whatever?
And they go put adjacent to the eight communities.
It comes down here to the school just in our community right now, okay? It goes, it goes into Twin Arch. It, it comes right to Twin Arch. It goes into the library and the senior center. It's up to the, to the fire department, hasn't been hooked up yet, but they, they've got it up there. And it goes into the, the schools.
Wow.
The middle school and the two elementary schools. And was that it? Is that, is that?
Yeah.
I think that was all that they said.
It's, it's basically the difference between a, um, a jogging path and a superhighway.
Right.
In terms of the, the amount of traffic or information or data, if you wish, that, that one can carry versus the other. So it could be revolutionary in terms of the capability of what you can do online from your home or from a remote work location or from any other commercial facility
Town hall.
or industrial facility or town hall. So that's the potential. It's a different kind of superhighway because we're never gonna have the equivalent of I seventy running, crisscrossing Carroll County and being able to attract, you know, the difference that that can make. This is a different kinda highway.
There's a lot of data services and, and there's more, we're, we're getting away from manufacturing and more service oriented in what we do as a nation. And the people that do that kind of work need huge, they, they need to be able to process stuff very quickly. Okay, and they, and this is, this has only been around for about ten years and it's all, it's already processing way more quickly than anything else they've ever found. They have it tapped with potential issues.
Michael?
Yeah.
I, I'm just curious, when, when they have that fiber optic network there now for the county, is that, is that accessible for, for the public or would it just be for the county?
It, it, it goes to, um, it's kinda like a water line. It's got, it's, it's got a line, a trunk line that comes up to here and then, um, branches off of it, okay? You can, you can branch off of it, okay? And you can run it into your, your, um, residential areas. What, what it's really for, what, what we have been discussing at EDC and, and the reason we brought him up there is to try to bring this into the town of Mount Airy. If you have this available, if you have high-speed fiber optic available in this town, you know, you don't have to sell the town.
So what is it, and pardon my ignorance about this, is it a... Is it only benefiting those who have like a physical connection?
Yes.
Yes.
So it wouldn't, it's not like a Wi-Fi?
Well, you can, you can, there is, there is a way to do a Wi-Fi with it and, and you could probably cover most of Mount Airy using the water towers. There's, there's two types of antennas. I don't remember what the, one of them is a wide, a wideband antenna and one is a very narrowband antenna.
Okay, but that wouldn't necessarily be secure. So, okay, so it, it, it has like two different uses.
Right.
But definitely for Mount Airy, it could, with the, the town could hook up to it
Right.
and put their governmental services directly to it and perhaps also deliver a Wi-Fi capability? Is, is that?
Well, it costs, I...
Can tell you in general.
There, there was a project that they did called The Last Mile
Right.
where, you know, it, it comes, it comes down twenty-seven and to take it into say Twin Arch, the, the town would have to pay that. It was seventeen dollars a foot, which...
That's find the shortest route.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's not, that's not inexpensive.
Right.
Seventeen dollars a foot, it adds up quickly.
Right.
But Carroll County is, is spending, well, they spent eighteen million dollars
Right.
to bring this to the county and they're one of the only counties in the whole United States that's doing this. I seem to remember about three or four being in discussion and, and Google is doing something.
There, there are thirty-five or so communities around the country that are in some form of development of this kind of digital infrastructure. And the interesting thing across the thirty-five is the funding templates and, and funding models that they're using. Westminster's using a model that Chattanooga, Tennessee, has been very, very successful with.
Right.
Quite frankly, their model says, we think we can justify the use of tax dollars if we build this in front of every single residence and every single business in the town. So potentially, anyone who resides or works in the town could have access to it and could hook up to it. Now, that's more expensive. There's more sunk cost in building an infrastructure, but there's more opportunity, there's more potential density. As a result, one thing washes the other. You have the opportunity for anyone to hook up to it and use it if they choose to, okay? And with that kind of access, when you say, y'all come on down, the Verizons and the Comcast and everyone else will come, they'll wanna participate, you'll get better product, you'll get higher quality, you'll get more competitive pricing.
All right, so like, for instance, Verizon FiOS, right? I know somebody who works for Verizon. I don't know if Chris does or not, it doesn't matter. But they told me, he told me Verizon is not bringing FiOS in
They have no interest in coming here.
because they can't justify the cost of bringing this network into Mount Airy.
Right, the backbone is too expensive for the density allow.
Right.
And that's not just in the town, it's throughout the entire county. They stopped.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So is this discussion about the town, county laying in that backbone and have service, internet service providers come in and say, oh?
Essentially taking, becoming the general contractor ourselves. So this kinda capability is accessible to us.
So then Verizon would say, oh, we can give you FiOS now.
And, and, and the discussion with, with you guys is maybe if you start requiring, all you would have to do is sink a conduit, a, a required two-inch, what'd he say, two-inch diameter? Two-inch diameter conduit. That goes, you know, from the street into the house.
And one of the things...
And they would, they would pull it later.
Right, and one of the things during our planning projects, like, um, plan, site plan review and, um, you know, all the infrastructure, is that we're going to start being proactive so that they install that conduit with the other utilities so it can just be fed through. So we're not going up, you know, we're not going back and, you know, doing another major upgrade.
So this discussion is about the town laying out the backbone for every street in the town?
No, this discussion is not that.
No, no.
This is just internal.
This is a discussion about what's, what's available out there that can, that can absolutely, and this is, it's an EDC thing, okay? If you have this high-speed fiber optic cable in your town, you will draw a particular kind of business that everybody wants. They don't make anything, you know, it's, they're, they're not making things. They're sitting in offices, servicing clients and that kinda stuff.
And they have a virtual presence on the internet and they can market anywhere.
And as, as the speeds get faster and faster, at, at this point, they don't know where it's, it's gonna reach its fastest. They, they, they're, they're just now starting to be able to go faster and faster and faster. And it's, it's not, it's the stuff at each end. You're still gonna need a provider, you're still gonna need somebody to provide that equipment at each end to send a signal and receive a signal.
But Westminster is going down this path. They've already committed
Right.
to do that Chattanooga model. So we can learn from them, there are different applications that are already underway in different places around the county that we can learn from. So it's, it's really someone like EDC working on it and taking a look at, how can you make this play?
And twelve or thirteen years ago Carroll County decided to go with it and, um, they're, they're going to come out very well in this. Oh, I know that, it's, it was the, um, area right across from the airport. That industrial area that they have right across from the airport where Norbreak is.
Yeah.
That's, that's the second area that they were...
Technology park.
So it's Carroll Lutheran Village and, and industrial area across from airports where they're, they're installing at their cost to see how this works.
The Westminster Technology Park, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, they, they wanna see how it works, they wanna see what the advantages.
Okay.
Are there any disadvantages?
The first thing that the town needs to do is find out how to directly benefit from it for their governmental services.
Right.
Because we're not hooked up to it, obviously.
As we've heard multiple times tonight, Heather.
And, and we were asking, we were asking about...
See, everything comes together, Tony.
It's amazing.
We were asking about return on your investment. He said this is not something, you're not gonna get your money back in six months.
Right.
Okay, this is, you know, a thirty, thirty-year, forty-year program. But they now operate, they now operate their own telephone system, saving themselves a half, Carroll County Government, half a million dollars a year
They have a void.
because they, their, their telephones run on their lines. And they're not paying a service provider or anything like that.
Yep.
So, you know, there's, there's a lot of advantages to this. It's something for us to start looking at. We're gonna start investigating in EDC. We think this would be something very beneficial to bring to the town. It's already here.
It is.
You know, it comes up, it comes up to the schools. So, you know, this is, this is something that
Pretty fabulous.
is here. How do we tap into it?
That's the next step.
I think it's a fantastic idea, it's just a matter of, like you said, justifying getting the money
Yeah.
Okay. See if we can't knock this out.
Garage sales.
All right, now we'll go to unfinished business.
I'll let you know how it works.
Work plan updates. Heather, give us the latest update on where the corridor study is.
The corridor study, um, the, the bids were, um, the bid, bid date has passed. We received two bids. We interviewed both applicants. Barney and I are actually meeting tomorrow to finalize our recommendation for the contract award for the successful bidder. And that will be presented to the town council on, um, April sixth at the town council meeting. And then from there, we will have a, um, a, a, a work schedule. The entire, um, study and the, the entire timeframe to complete the study, conduct the community outreach sessions and present the plan is going to be about six to nine months. So, um, we will be giving you an update in April to notify you of the, um, successful awarty and give you more, um, more information as to the next steps.
So Heather, just to refresh me, how far north up twenty-seven are we gonna be looking?
We went all the way to west here. I wanted to Westminster, but that was a bit out of the scope. However, we, we did go to Main Street and Harrison LaSh- uh, I'm, I'm sorry, LaShire.
LaShire Road.
LaShire Road.
Oh, okay.
Lord Mayan LaShire.
Hence, hence the reason to have the briefing next time around with Audrey and Heather so we clear up something.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
In, in light of the new information you brought up tonight
Mm-hmm.
with the cobra problem, if that in fact is part of OPE and touches twenty-seven, it seems to me that maybe the county's thinking of another intersection up there.
My, my, my understanding in talking with senior county officials is, no. The senior county officials have told me directly that they don't... The senior county officials have told me directly that they don't have interest in going, you know, going further north. Hence the reason why I brought the issue up this evening was in discussions with senior county officials, hey, you know, what have you guys heard? Oh, well, you oughta look at, so my, my understanding is, no, they're not interested.
Well, but then again, if there's capability.
Trust but verify.
There's intent and capability and they're two different things.
Okay, and how about a status update on MXD?
MXD, I, um, I believe that the, um, the subcommittee, we're about ninety percent there. Um, the final draft is in the town attorney's, um, hands right now for legal review. Um, we do have some homework due from Mr. Screen that we're waiting on. Um, so we will compile that.
That's gonna put me on the spot.
You're late with your assignment, I'm just saying, um, but.
I have spoken with that.
Okay, I know.
The way you comment.
I know. So as soon as we get those comments back, um, we will incorporate those.
I said, I don't know and I'm the chair, but that's okay.
I don't know either.
Okay.
Um. So the, the next step, um, we'll, we'll combine, um, the, the, the comments along with the attorney review and then we're gonna get back together, um, you know, in, in some, some fashion, either face-to-face or email. Um, but I'm hoping that the timing will work for the end of April. It really just depends on, um, our attorney's workload. He's pretty inundated with some litigation right now.
With the MML conference in Ocean City and early summer and so forth, practically speaking, it probably makes sense to, to have, um, have a draft to give to council when by June, July? Well.
Yeah.
Well, but you, you gotta, you gotta council election and all of that, so.
We were, we were hoping for the May timeframe to at least lay it out to the council, just.
Yeah, depending on Tom. I didn't realize Tom was so busy. We're gonna, yeah, that's MML.
Right.
So we're, we're gonna talk about the date of that. But somewhere in that timeframe, probably June, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that, that's the, we, we definitely wanna move it along, but we, we wanna, um, you know, do our due diligence as well.
Cool. All right, and sign ordinance, where, maybe that's a June timeframe?
Uh, yes, I was informed by the council president that that would not be placed on the agenda prior to June. And that's, I don't have anything else to add about that.
Well, we've got, we've got, we've got other things to be working on anyway.
Absolutely.
And just to clarify that again, I know we kind of discussed this, oh, last meeting or the one before. So council has it, but what do we need to do prior to that June meeting?
Actually, would you like a work session?
Yeah, I think, I, I think the intent of the council was to do similar to what we did with the master plan, have a joint work session to kinda iron out the details, yes.
Okay.
But the, the intent is to simplify and provide more clarity with it and just wanna spell that out.
I think what happens is, we were, we were sitting here at the table and Heather mentioned one kinda sign and somebody else mentioned another kinda sign and somebody else mentioned another kinda sign. And I asked about the difference between the signs and they said, no, this is all the same thing. All three of these signs are exactly the same thing. And I said, wait. So that's what we have to clarify is, is the, the physical characteristics of what this box sign is or.
Cabinet sign.
Cabinet sign, you know.
Same thing.
Whatever.
And we'll, we'll pick a, a term.
Because some of us are not sinologists. We don't understand this stuff.
Well, you will be.
We.
With, with the ultimate, with the ultimate.
It would be nice before we vote.
Well, and, and also.
With the ultimate goal of having it, it being passed and then we never talk about signs again, that's, Heather can deal with the whole.
I don't know, you can ask Rob, I'm, I'm kind of a pain when it comes to signs anyway.
Yeah, but, you know, all that other stuff.
I do. I do have an issue with that.
Well, I think the other thing, isn't the ordinance forty or fifty pages long?
Not anymore. No, it started out to be that way and then it was narrowed down to critical elements. So it's thirty pages now.
MXD was thirty-five.
But I, I can't imagine you could, should have a ordinance about signs.
Okay, we're done with that. We're, we've moved beyond that, we've moved beyond that. We also, um, when we have that meeting, we'll be talking about the political signs.
Yes, we will not forget that, I promise. And I still, I owe the planning commission, I didn't send it out yet because I had the direction that we weren't gonna be talking about it, so I will be sending out that latest version of the sign draft and your political sign thing. So it's on my May to-do list.
The, another issue of scheduling, and Heather, maybe you and Chris can conspire on this, is the timing of when we might have some IDA representatives back to talk.
Some that actually know what they're talking about.
Now, unless, unless there's a need to, to establish more clarity with, with small meetings first, but we were gonna have a follow-up with Isaac Minaj, okay?
Yes.
And, uh, after he was here. And, um, maybe we need to do some, um, one-on-one first, but at some point, we, we would wanna have some IDA representatives come and address the whole commission.
Yeah, there seems to be a little bit, again, of maybe communication issues between the IDA and what they want. Um, I've been now working with Commissioner Rothschild. Commissioner Rothschild's been talking to the IDA and the economic development folks, getting them on the same page. The concept would be they, once they're on the same page, they come and brief the planning commission about their high-level needs. Planning commission then executes and tunes up the OPE and then we move forward.
I just hope it's complimentary to the town's wishes, wants and needs.
We're, we're gonna insist on it.
Planning will execute its functions.
Okay, did, did everyone get in their packets, uh, a copy of the, the letter from Bill Hager?
Yep.
Okay. Then I would say take a look at your calendars, uh, because this first meeting is an invitation to any of us on the commission and, uh, and Heather's group, okay, that, 'cause I think it would be really interesting to, um, to see what transpires with representation from each of the communities, Carroll County communities, planning groups with the, the county planning staff. Uh, the date is Wednesday, May the sixth. See if that works for you and then, um, you know, get back with Heather or me to raise your hand if you're able to, if you're interested in that. Um, but this is really the kickoff to what we've been asking for and they're responding on it. So I think it couldn't come at a, a better time in terms of trying to open up and clarify the discussions. Um, okay, other business, next planning commission meeting then, probably shouldn't be April twenty-ninth. Is that what we're saying?
Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seventh.
No, I think that that's okay. I think we would wanna figure out June's.
Yeah, June is, June is, yeah, about June twenty-eighth to July the first.
If we wanna move that up, but we can decide that in May.
Yeah, we can do that in May. So Monday, April twenty-seventh works. Okay?
And then May's moved up to holiday.
All right, zoning administrator report, anything on?
Just a quick thing, Heather, on the zoning report?
Yes.
Is the one-on-one Twin Arch wrote the zoning, was that the Buckman's property? Remember he was residential surrounded by industrial? Is that?
This is permits issued, so that's the sign.
Oh, I just saw, I was not aware of zoning.
Zoning? Uh, that's, that would be like the zoning certificate for the, I'm sorry, toy exchange, no. That's just zoning certificates, um, issued.
I know, it was a long time ago, I never.
Yeah, I'm sorry, no.
Did he ever change his to?
Uh-huh, yeah, it was actually, it was changed, um, January fifth. When the, uh, this part of the comprehensive rezoning.
Right, right, okay.
And actually, you know what, Tony, that brings up a good point. We, like, in-house, we understand that that zoning certificate, but that could be misleading. So I'll add zoning certificate issued to that. That doesn't signify that a zoning.
If we had fiber, this wouldn't be an issue.
I, I agree, I agree.
All right. Is there any, uh, significant update with, um, with Mount Airy I Care's new location? I, I've noticed that trees have been cut down.
Yes, I know, I'm sorry though.
Clearing has, has begun.
Yes.
Any update on timing of that?
Um, no update on timing. Um, I believe the, um, desired date is early summer, so like June, July. Um, it, it can stop not being not spring, I think that would help, um, so. So, um.
And Chris Foreman's property, has there been progress with the county?
Uh-huh, yep, the Mylars, um, have been submitted and are being circulated within the town. Um, we will be reaching out to the honorable chairman for his signature when they come back.
Good, good. Anybody got anything else?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second, any, won't see any reason not to? Then let's adjourn.
Thank you, everybody.